Beyond, okay? And as I was just told, speak closer to the mic so everybody can hear. So if we all take a look at the agenda, the item on the agenda that we're going to be discussing is Resolution 43-2016, which was referred to us by council on the 5th last week. And as you look at the agenda, you're going to see that there's a number three and number five, which ultimately I'm going to combine into one. So we'll have, the beginning portion will have it open for everybody to speak. There will not be a number five. We're going to do it all under number three. And I'm thinking the order, and Board, if you disagree, let me know. Russell Baruch would like to speak. After that, we can have the developers speak, and then we can take any comments from the audience. And I think we need to kind of pay attention to all of that and listen to what all the issues are so we can further delve into and develop what we have in front of us. So with that, any questions with how we're going to do this tonight? From the Board?
No.
No. Mr. Baruch, why don't you come on up? Floor is yours.
I will need it for more than a moment since I don't have a full presentation. I'm a relatively new consultant to the city, and therefore, let me say that I have begun to and will continue to receive A) and evaluate B) financial information from the developer and to analyze it on the city's behalf. The information has started to come in, and if I've got my facts right, or hope, as early as next week, the balance of what I've been seeking should be in, and I'll be able to dig into it and then report back at a subsequent meeting of this body.
Once you get the information approximately, how long do you think it will take for that to happen? Just understanding you don't have it yet, but once you get it, how long do you expect?
Well, wouldn't you know, next week is vacation, so I'm gonna therefore hedge and say two and a half, three weeks from today? Or said differently, two weeks from receipt? Does that seem reasonable, acceptable?
I don't see any issues with that. Does anybody else? Anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Baruch?
No, but I'm happy to answer questions to the best of my ability.
Is anybody on the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Baruch?
Yeah, Mr. Baruch, Tom Juris, what exactly is your part in this? You're going to be analyzing what?
Chiefly, the budget prepared by the developer, the cost, income, expense of the project in general, and the individual components in particular, i.e. apartments, retail, elderly housing, et cetera, down the line. Also be looking at, should it be presented at a level of detail that links to the budget, the potential ask for payments in lieu of taxes put up by the developer, or in other words, TIF financing.
Okay, but you're actually going to look at the developer's budget for his cost in the project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Jeff Brede, so are you looking at the economic impact to the city at all?
Yes, sorry, I failed to say that at the beginning. That was actually the genesis of this assignment. The reason for looking at all that information I just described is to mainly study the cost to the city, municipal services and whatnot, but also the benefit in terms of revenue and other, and other streams of money to come in to the city associated with the project as proposed, but also in the view of the potential TIF requests being considered. In short, cost benefit.
He's working for us, basically, for the city.
Indeed.
Are you, the information you're gathering from the developers will be their own economic studies, and then you'll be proofing those out?
Exactly right. It'll be the numbers put up by the developer, and I will vet them. I hope to interact, as we've begun to do already, in a constructive, positive way. In addition to that, I will use my own independent resources, judgment, experience, to prove them out.
So roughly two weeks from receipt, and we'll still have two and a half weeks, roughly two weeks or so to act on it within our 30-day timeframe.
Keeping in mind that our timeframe started last Tuesday, so it may be very tight.
Mr. Chairman, actually, the referral was on the 6th.
Okay.
And under our ordinance, 90104, there is, council has provided for 60-day review by Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but nobody can hear. If everybody could speak into the microphones, it would be appreciated. I'm sorry.
Is your mic on?
It is.
You need to speak close.
Okay, to repeat that, the actual referral date was July 6th from council to Planning Commission, just to make that clear. And our local ordinance, 90104, does provide that any referral under the Charter, Section 7E, which is what we're dealing with here, allows a 60-day timeframe for Planning Commission to review and make its report.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Baruch? Thank you, we look forward to that report. The developers like to speak. It's yours.
Just loud enough. Good evening, planning panel, thanks for having us. Jeff Grave, for the record, principal, one of the principals of LSB Seven Hills. And what we're discussing tonight is the PUD that we've all, ordinance that we've all collectively been working on between the city and the, our attorney and land planners. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have, or the audience may have, or the public. We understand this can't be done in one shot. We would request that we also get scheduled for your next regularly scheduled meeting, which I believe is August 4th.
Correct.
And our plan at that time, we'd like to, tonight, take, discuss everything. I know traffic is a hot button. The traffic engineer has completed all of his data points, but he has not prepared his report. He's promised to have that to us on the 29th, so we could review it over that weekend, and then get it to all of you, and then have him come in and do a presentation at the August 4th meeting for the public and for the Board as it relates to the traffic study.
Just one question. So council passed 56-2016 and received a copy of that, and then subsequently received some suggested changes. Are those changes coming from you guys? Do you know?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And Alan will go through those changes. I think they were just very minor, little wording things.
Okay. Yeah, at some point, I'd like to actually know, have that done. Are there any other questions for Jeff? Well, he's up here. From the Board. I'm here. Does, can we have that done then? I'd just like to know what the changes that are being suggested. But the document that was passed, I'm assuming both parties essentially agreed to that document between, what was negotiated between the city's attorneys and?
That is correct. Yep. Pam and Christine and Alan and Matt have been hard at work, several meetings, you know, collaborating and getting the document to where it is today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I add a comment to that while Mr. Grave's up here?
Yes.
The, and Pam Hanover, our special counsel, can also add something, if you'd like Pam, if you'd like to come up. The document that was, is amended, ordinance 58-2016?
Yes.
That was referred to Planning Commission on July 6th of this year, was a document that was worked on between myself and special counsel Pam Hanover, as well as attorney Alan Ritchie on behalf of LSB, the developer. And I would say that we did not agree to, you know, there is not an agreement as to all of the terms, but the, especially with regard to the design standards, those were suggested by the developer, on behalf of the developer, as to something the developer would like to see and thought was reasonable. And those were placed in this ordinance for that reason, and we all understood that Planning Commission would be reviewing those matters in terms of design standards as your area of purview, as well as council then reviewing it thereafter. And Pam, would you like to add anything to that, to clarify? Would you like to?
I'd just add that that would include also things like the parking spaces, the height limitations, the setbacks. Those are areas that, you know, we as lawyers have not really reviewed or commented on. The process, you know, the uses, the restrictions, the compliance with the Charter, the process for approval, you know, this sort of the whole front half is basically what we've worked on.
You know, I apologize. Is that, is that summary of those particular items in the not approved? These are the recommendations?
Yes.
Or those filtered within the?
The amended ordinance that you received, the entire document as the referral from council, contains everything that was referred, the entire ordinance. The handout that I gave you today includes those portions that show the suggested changes that attorney Ritchie submitted to us for Planning Commission consideration. So you'll only see, and as it says at the top, just take a look, it says, make sure you take a look at these and compare them to the complete document, so you can see where they'll fit in and what changes are being suggested.
Okay.
Okay, and those are all the, they're not all in the height section or in the design standards, but there are some use, some use restrictions, et cetera. And we, as we did work on these provisions, especially the uses, prohibited, permitted, et cetera, we tried to have it drafted in accordance with what the Charter would allow, et cetera, what feedback we had received or thought we had received from council. And again, we all understood that Planning Commission would be reviewing these and making any suggestions that it felt necessary or fit, or if you had any questions or any changes you would like, this is the form to be doing it in as you go through these meetings. Would you agree, Pam, or add anything?
No, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Just to be clear, so who has jurisdiction to change this document?
Who has jurisdiction to change this document?
58-2016.
I think we would make any recommendation that we wanted with respect to the document to council, and then council would ultimately vote on that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Tobin? When this document was created, did, was there consideration given to the Section 14-7, the Plan Unit Development Ordinance considerations? These considerations, I'm assuming?
Yes, we did review those and try to write the language, especially in the use, in the front sections, .02, .03, with a mind toward what's in our Charter.
What I'd like is to hear everybody's, anyone who's sitting here, their concerns, any comments, any issues you want to raise. I think we, as the Planning Commission, should hear all of those, take special note, and use those in our deliberations when we go through the document. So at this time, if you have any issues, you have any concerns, if you have any, any matter you want to address, now would be the time to do it. I would request that you come up, try to keep it brief. We're not going to set a specific timeframe for you to, oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, Mr. Ritchie, can you come up and tell us what the differences that the developer is suggesting to the document, and then we'll get into the audience. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Alan Ritchie from Thompson Heine here in Cleveland. I represent the developer, LSB. And as Ms. Tobin mentioned, you know, this really is a working document. You know, I think that the attorneys worked well together to get it in a form that it complied with the Charter, the process complied with provisions that, you know, are reflective of your current codes, et cetera. Things like design standards, height issues, setbacks, those types of things are clearly, I think, best left to your good judgment, and so we expect to reflect, you know, feedback in this document, and as part of that, hopefully, you'll consider some of ours as we go along. So in connection with the submittal of this and the referral from council, like around the same time that it was sent in the packet to council to consider, we had also suggested a couple of revisions. They're basically minor, we think, but that's why there's the difference. And so I'll walk through those now. The first is in the use section. Actually, and basically, the change in the use section was that we wanted to address the circumstance where, you know, where we were permitting apartments, the specific instances of apartments in the PUD. Of course, we're prohibiting freestanding apartment buildings, because we understand the city's concerns there. But we were permitting residential use on top of retail, or on top of other commercial uses, et cetera. And so what we wanted to do, because many instances in development, you will have condominium development, that's either a former apartment building that's converted to condominium, or it could be, you know, an apartment building that was permitted under the code. We wanted the flexibility from a development standpoint to initially build a condominium building where you'd have individual owners instead of apartment renters, individual owners. In those instances where we felt that apartments were permitted to begin with. So we weren't really making a change, it was going to really be a change to ownership. And you might have heard that it's, it's kind of the big home concept where you'll develop a building that looks like a very big luxury home, and what it really is, is four or five condominium units, for example. So we're trying to add some flexibility. So only in those instances where we otherwise would have been permitted to put in residential apartments, we wanted initially to be able to do that as a condominium development. And in those instances where we had an apartment building that was already permitted under the PUD, if there was an instance or a reason why developer would want to convert that to condo, for example, we wanted some of that flexibility to do that as well. So that was the first, you know, suggestion, your consideration.
Mr. Ritchie, so the current planned mixed-use calls for residential above the retail currently, that would be owner-occupied residential. Is that not a condominium? Is that, is there a difference, or?
Yeah, an apartment building is owned by a landlord, and then they'll sign leases with the folks that are living there. Whereas a condominium building looks like an apartment building, for the most part, except each, you have individual owners that own, you know, a real estate interest. They own their unit, like we own our homes. They just own them in common with others.
So the current plan calls for mixed use with the developer owning the facility and renting out the apartments above the retail?
In some, right, exactly. And I think the next change was really, was just a clarification in the design standards, just some language. You know, we have general standards, and then we have specific standards for those particular uses. And, you know, it's our suggestion that if we do have specific standards, that those would apply over the general. So that was really just more of a, you know, more of a language comment, and the difference between the general use in site design versus the particular, I think we just wanted to clarify that language.
Which subsection?
That is in Section 979.13, capital E, Part 1.
You skipped over some, some stuff, I believe.
I don't have your hand out, I'm sorry.
Oh. Just so we're all following this.
Oh, right. Okay, so I can walk through this. We can go back to the beginning then.
No, I think we're good on 97902 and 3. I mean, 3 just relates back to 2 anyway. You're just adding the condominium.
Yep, yep.
So I think you go to 97904.
Thank you. 97904, the bottom part of 97904 relates to condominium discussion that we just had. The, we filled in a blank. We filled in a blank with respect to the term, big box, just a suggested square footage. I think in 97910. This was a note that was in some of the drafts that we had, and it's really just a discussion issue that we wanted to make sure was kept on the table. It relates to a bond requirement that the building commissioner, under the code, has the ability to require at the time of final plan approval. And we just wanted a little clarity with respect to the application of that bond and what that bond relates to. You know, it speaks in terms of, you know, requiring a bond with respect to the completion of certain improvements. I think traditionally, that bond is given for things like any kind of public road extension or utility extension, those types of things, which is pretty typical. So we just wanted to make sure that's the kind of bond that was being considered in terms of a development like this, and not a bond that we're actually going to build an entire hotel at some point, or whatever. We just needed some clarity there. In 97912, for variances, we added the word density there, just because we do have number limitations in our use requirements. So for example, in 979.04, we talk about freestanding residential buildings containing more than two units, et cetera. And then in some of our suggestions for the condominiums, you know, we were limiting it to 14 side-by-side units. And so we wanted to come in for variance from those numbers. We wanted to clear that, that density, that's what I'm referring to, density. We wanted to try, is it okay if we do 15 or 16 instead of 14, those types of things? The next page was that reference that I was just talking about in the design standards, the general use design, you know, requirements versus the more specific. We just wanted to make it clear that, you know, we think the more specific should govern or be, you know, more applicable to the extent they might conflict with some of the And then in the next one, the minimum street and parking space standards, no, actually, I might ask someone from Bieloski to speak about this one, but this was just, you know, size issues to, you know, more generally reflect, you know, lifestyle centers in the area, and the size of parking spaces, and turning radiuses and those types of things, two-way drive aisles. And the last thing was, I believe, we just had a couple of really clarifying statements in the height sections, just specifically referring down to the drawings that applied to a couple of paragraphs, just to make it a little clearer, where the concept that's discussed in that certain area, you know, what diagram we're trying to, you know, use as an example, as to how, you know, the height limitation would, would work. And that was it.
Can we go back to 97904 for a second? The last, there were some changes in that last paragraph. He added residential condominium buildings containing no more than 14 condominium units. Just want to make sure, because you didn't touch on that, that's also part of it, right?
Right, and so in connection, you know, I think, you know, some of the designs that are being considered for clustered homes are freestanding units that all have their own, you know, area of land upon which they sit. And, you know, the number of those units, I think, you know, we're looking at multi-United, you know, 12, 14 units. And so we just wanted to say that with respect to condominiums, because they aren't P-Simple multi-attached cluster townhomes, but they'll look just like them, that the number we're thinking about is like around 14, that would be together.
Any other questions from Planning Commission? Good. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. So as I had started to say before, anyone who wishes to raise any concerns, comments, or any matter that they want the Planning Commission to consider or look at, please come forward. I just want to stress, I don't want this to be a question-answer session, you guys asking us questions, because we're at the same spot where you're at with respect to digesting a lot of this material. So we may not necessarily have answers for you, but I would just ask that you present your concerns, and we'll be able to digest them as we go through this document.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need the 1227 Rockside, Tony Biasia. Just air my concerns. First thing, it's right before the meeting, we've got six-page update. I know it's, some of it's a revision, but this was embedded by council, like the ordinance was. We were given an ordinance, we studied, we had a special caucus on it, and this was referred to the Planning Commission. Updates came today, they didn't come to council. So does that change anything, that this new document was not referred to the Planning Commission from council? And if you don't have an answer, that's fine, but that's a concern.
No, councilman, the answer to that is Planning Commission is charged with reviewing the ordinance referred and making any comments or suggestions for any changes, and the developer wanted them to consider those additional changes. So whether they come from the developer, or from the members of Planning Commission, or from residents, those are all things that can be considered.
So anyone really can make suggestions to the Planning Commission? If I wanted to write a list and submit it to the Planning Commission, I'm good with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, I want to thank both the developers and all you on the Planning Commission for the work that you're about to do. I'd like to thank Councilman Mann and Councilman Tim for all the work they've put on this. Of course, I have concerns about sewer traffic and the economic impact, but all those questions aren't ready to be answered yet, but I'll reserve comments when we have that analysis. The biggest concern I have today is when, about a month ago, we had a special caucus on the PUD. I had received concerns from my residents at the Holiday Inn meeting, of questions they had about apartments and high-rise apartments. And I brought those concerns to the special caucus meeting, and we made adjustments to the height restrictions in that document at that time, a month ago. The document we have today actually did not lower the height restrictions, in my understanding, which all council agreed upon. It actually went up. On page 21, at least on my handout, we have the ability to go up to 85 feet, which, not being an engineer, to me, that implies there's a potential that we can have up to an eight-story building. There's nothing that's been shared with me to this day, and I do believe that's eight stories. I am worried about population density, worried about infrastructure, and my residents are surely concerned about high-rise apartments. So my other concern is, if something's owned for a senior apartment, what protection will we have that it does not turn into just an ordinary apartment building? Lot of other concerns, but those- building? A lot of other concerns, but those are the big ones for today, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jack Train 6264, Crossview Road. I'm just concerned, when you come to these meetings, you talk about handouts, and people have graphs and drawings to look at, and you sit here in the audience as a taxpayer and a resident, and you don't even know what's going on here. I don't think that's totally fair to the audience. And secondly, I don't quite understand this situation with the condos and the apartments. I think that should be spelled out very clearly, what's going on. These are all owner-occupied buildings? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Richard Delacqua, 661 East Pleasant Valley Road. I first want to say thank you to everybody for all of the work and dedication in bringing this proposed project to our city. I think everybody's goal here is to realize the very best project that we possibly can, one that the developer will make a profit and one that will be in the best interest of the city. With that being said, as everybody, I think, knows, I've been very reticent in withholding my support for this project until we have received verifiable projections of the economic impact upon our city. My conversations with Mr. Berusch, I understand that those things are still in process, and hopefully, when we do have a final report, we will come to learn that this is indeed in the benefit of both the developer, the city, and our residents. I just want to talk about a couple of things. I've been a little concerned about the way the process has transpired to this point. I believe that there should have at least been, to this point, at this point, a discussion at least about a development agreement. I think a lot of the work that you will be undertaking here will at least duplicate what should have gone into that and probably could have been resolved before this resolution of referral was signed off on by council. But that being said, we find ourselves where we are here at this point. A couple of two, three things. I want to talk about overall broad perspectives here rather than specifics. I believe that we need, and I think everybody here would agree, we need to have an assurance that what will go in here will not ultimately turn into high-rise rental units. I'm a little concerned when I read things like senior housing, condominiums, those to me, and I'm meaning any disparaging remarks about the developer, his attorneys, those to me are open doors down the road for the possibility of conversion into rental units. I would like to see more specificity either in this PUD ordinance or in a development agreement, which I say should have been in process at this point, that assures the city that condominiums will remain condominiums and that senior housing will indeed be senior housing, not turned ultimately into apartments which are comfortable for seniors but could be used by anybody. I've also expressed to a couple of you my concern about the height restrictions which are specified in the PUD. I believe that eight-story buildings in our community, I know, are unprecedented. The highest building in our town is the Genesis Building, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's six stories. When that went in a few years ago, there was a lot of controversy about the height. What's being proposed here is at least two stories taller than what we have in our city now. If you know the topography of the 53-some-odd acres which potentially could be in this PUD district, you know that it rises from north to south by about 80 feet. So unless we're very careful here, if we're going to allow an 85-foot structure at the south end, we're effectively talking about a building that will stand 160 feet taller than Rockside Road. Now, I don't know about you, but that's not something that I think our residents would appreciate looking out their kitchen windows at. I have some other concerns which I'd be willing to share with you. I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail at this point. I know there are going to be at least one or more work sessions, but this PUD needs a lot of work. If you take a look, for example, and I'll only point out a couple of things here, at the, excuse me while I find it, the definition of one-way streets, if somebody could help me with the page that that's located on, I think it calls for a 14-foot-wide one-way street, but provides for an eight-foot parking. Thank you, page 14. If you take a look at page 14, and again, I don't want to belabor these points, these are things that will be discussed later on. The amendment that, I see 14 in what you have, it provides for 16 feet, but the proposed amendment provides for 14 feet with an eight-foot parking width. That leaves a six-foot width for vehicular traffic. I don't know about you, but my SUV will barely get through six feet. Imagine delivery trucks, ambulances, fire trucks. Six feet is not sufficient for emergency vehicles. And again, I don't want to nitpick this thing, there's a lot of work that remains to be done here. My overarching concern, at least at this point, includes those two elements. We want an assurance that we're not going to have rental units and high-rise apartments in our town. And we want to assure, and again, this may not necessarily be in your purview, we want to assure that there is a net economic benefit to the city before we approve. And we're going to be relying on Mr. Berusch and the information from the developer to develop that down the road. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
My name is Dennis Glendery, and I live in 6069 Crossview. One of the big concerns that we have for the existing people living on Crossview, a couple of them has come up to me and asked me to give a message. We are worried about devaluation of our homes. If there is a devaluation from what the planning commission allows, what you present, the residents on Seven Hills have been informing to let you know they will be suing the city and you guys. It's happened. You can contact a good attorney, he'll reassure you, and it's happened to a couple cities, where they've lowered the standards. You have houses there that are 200, 300,000. You can't put something in there that's going to bring that down to 100,000. So I'm asking you to take in consideration what you do allow them to build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Mason, 3667 Rachel Court, Seven Hills, and a member of the Glenn's Landing LLC, which purchased the First Energy property. First, I just wanted to touch on Mr. Berusch. Mr. Berusch, Lloyd Chapman and I talked last week and gave him all the information that I think he needed to do his impact study or whatever that is that he was producing for you. Secondly, then, I would like to talk to you a little bit about 97901, the map on file, which incorporates the area upon which the putt is going to be in place. Do we know what that is? What area it encompasses?
I have a copy of that map here.
Talking right here, Phil. I mean, it looks like it goes all the way up to the door.
Do you have a copy of the ordinance?
What I'm trying to determine is if the First Energy property is incorporated in this area, the land we purchased.
I have no idea.
Okay, your question is, would it be covered by this ordinance?
Correct.
And the answer is, yes, it's found in 979.01?
Correct, that's what I'm asking. Okay, thank you. I just gave everybody a copy of the charter language that was passed back in 2006, which is what the authority for you making these decisions with regards to the putt. Section 7 of that charter language states that, this is the language that was passed by the voters in 2006. Council may, by ordinance, create or expand a planned unit development district. And I've broken it down into three things that it says you can do. To be developed under a common plan and forming in the aggregate of an area not less than 35 acres of contiguous land. So that's what the charter language that was passed by the voters of the city said. Ordinance 582016, section 979.06, talks about this requirement. In that requirement that's being considered, it requires 35 acres first, in order for someone to be able to develop, they have 35 acres. Then, after a preliminary plan is approved, so somebody's got to come forward with a plan with 35 acres, then it's got to get preliminary approval. Then, any other group owning less than 35 acres, contiguous acres, may only submit a preliminary plan after it's been approved. So, for example, the land we purchased, the First Energy land we purchased, we cannot come forward with a plan until, under this plan, until council has approved, the planning commission has given a preliminary approval to the group with 35 acres or more, then we can come in and make a plan. That's what the ordinance says. The charter says that the putt is met by, it must be developed under a common plan, that's all it requires, in an area forming in the aggregate not less than 35 acres. Clearly, the map that is being considered and approved by this ordinance takes in approximately 70 acres. So there's about 70 acres that's being considered for this planned unit development. The charter only requires that there be 35 acres together, so it meets that requirement, I guess is what I'm saying. But the ordinance requires there to first to be 35 acres. The charter doesn't require that. The ordinance requires that there be 35 acres for somebody to permit, to come before the planning commission and submit their plan for development. I don't understand why. That's not what the charter requires. And I'd ask you to really, this is very important to my group, to look at that very closely, because requiring 35 acres when we have 17, we have a $50 million project waiting to go, but the way this ordinance written, we have to require, wait till this developer gets preliminary approval from you, then we can submit our plan. Why? Why is that there, and why does that make any sense at all? I'm asking the planning commission to look at this very seriously, look at the charter language I provided to you, and try to figure out why that makes any sense at all. Why would you give preference to one developer over another? It makes no sense to me, and I hope it makes no sense to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Terry, go ahead.
Mr. Mason, can you, your initial comments about, what did you submit to the consultant?
He asked us basically about what our project was all about, the assisted living, independent living, memory care project that we have ready to move. Asked us about the value of it to the city, meaning tax dollars-wise, and we submitted to him. I think he's got everything he needs from us. At least that's how the conversation ended.
Yes, absolutely.
Through the chair.
I'm here. Yeah, good conversation, the high-level conversation, it's appreciated. What I would like to do is follow up offline if I can, and even be an email, this is most particular, just to make sure I've got a good understanding of the scope and the revenue protection, job creation investment, so I can go about, write the thoughts, because that would be acceptable.
Mr. Berusch, I just learned that if you don't come up to the microphone, it doesn't get recorded. So can I trouble you to come up and say what you just said into the microphone so we can get it on tape?
I was saying that we had a productive conversation on the telephone. I now have a high-level understanding of the proposed scope of the developer's program in terms of land use, job estimates, revenues, which is good. What I would like to do is follow up offline and obtain in writing, some form, some specific, concrete confirmation of that information, so I can work off of that.
So is it safe to assume the study, you're going to be doing your economic impact study for both groups?
Okay.
Does, Terry, does that kind of answer?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize, I was flipping pages.
If I could. I don't know, Mr. Mason suggested that we render some kind of legal opinion on this chap, section 7 in the charter. I wondered if Christine or, I'm not going to render any legal opinions, I'm not qualified, could Christine or Pam make some kind of comment in response to Mr. Mason's allegation?
I don't know that he was asking us for a legal opinion. I think he just wanted us to make sure we were very carefully, correct me if I'm wrong, very carefully reviewed this in making any decision, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay, and we can always get any legal opinion we need, I would assume, from Ms. Tobin and Ms. Hanover, yeah, we can. Do you think we need one now?
I guess we don't need one right now, but I'd certainly like to see one from Legal and Squires or whoever has to.
I don't disagree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, could I continue? Christine?
Yeah.
How soon can we expect to have some sort of opinion from Legal on Mr. Mason's contention?
Pam? We'll be talking about it, and we'll get back to you on that.
When?
We'll talk about it and get back to you on it.
When would that be?
I don't have a date right now.
Okay, soon, I hope. Thank you.
For your consideration, certainly.
Okay.
Hello? Carol, excuse me, Carol Paladin, 3185 Sparrow Light Drive. What Mr. Mason just suggested is that there has to be a preliminary agreement before a supplemental area can be developed agreement. How does that affect the city acreage? I haven't heard that included in this PUD section. Thank you. Do I make that clear?
Are you referring to land owned by the city?
Yes, sir. And as it relates to the question like Mr. Bill Mason asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Whitmer, 6100 Crossview Road. I brought my neighbors, we live right across from the proposed road. On Crossview, that's going to be built, and we are concerned about the traffic and eagerly awaiting the traffic report. We hope to see if it's possible that the roads could just be built on Rockside and nothing in that area on Crossview. I've been, the next thing I'm concerned about is the property, the buildings, the homes that are, the townhomes that are going to be built, the price that they would be selling at, and the condo prices. I've not heard anything about that. And also, it's my understanding that apartments don't bring money into the city, so I'm just questioning why we're having apartments above the retail instead of just going with condos. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, Norman Martin, 6161 Roost Drive, single-family homeowner with my wife Tracy. And I guess, since we're at the preliminary stages of all this, for your review and recommendations to council, I just want to say thank you to those who've kept me up in the loop and kept abreast of what's going on here. We certainly, as our family, we certainly think that the process portion of this PUD ordinance is certainly in good shape. Where we disagree yet and look forward for further input and comment later on is getting protection through the design standards, particularly in our case, and we're generally in favor of development of the parcel, obviously, but, you know, obviously, we're going to look at it from our own narrow perspective, and that is, we're a single-family homeowner adjacent to the very southern boundary of this parcel, and we're very concerned about setback requirements and building heights, and how you place a for-profit entity adjacent to single-family residents, and how those two things match up. So, we're looking forward to seeing work on landscaping issues and building height issues. I have some specific items, just, you know, since you're at the preliminary stages. You know, I guess the fundamental thing is the flexibility that you gain from the PUD ordinance for the developer should also provide the opposite end of that, and that's protection for a single-family property owner, because you get flexibility in order to be able to provide a quality zone, and that's what we're hoping is going to be in the end. Specifically, in section 979.03, regarding setbacks, currently, that's at a 50-foot rate, and we would like to see that increased. Specifically, in the landscape section, we're looking for a little more prescriptive language, and that's because we believe words have meaning. A lack of those words will mean there's no standard in which to compare a proposal in front of you in the future for whether or not it's in compliance. So we were looking for some densities and some very specific requirements there. And something that could withstand an appeal, if you turn down a developer regarding, you know, a proposal, are you doing it in such a manner that it's something that's fair? Other building height issues under the southern border, under 979.14, that height plane is, I'm a little bit concerned, and certainly would not want to see anything of significant height at the southern end of this parcel. So if that's not your intentions to have anything like that, the words need to say that. On page 14, item 4, under, there's a reference to setback requirements under 979.16, and I think that's just a typo. I don't believe there is a 979.16, 979.15 need to be pumped up a little bit. And we will provide some written correspondence to you, once we've had, gained a little more insight of what's occurring, to be part of the record and be part, be able to follow this ourselves and our neighbors who are greatly interested in what's going on here. But we just specifically say that, just remember, the words have meaning, and without them, there is no way to protect us. So we're looking for you to do that, with your recommendations to council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, probably some of the answer, but let's hear it.
Cheryl Petray, 716 East Johnwood. I just looked on the map here, and it showed section G, which is commercial. And I thought that commercial brings in the most taxes for the community, and that the reason that we were going through all this was to bring in more taxes, tax money. So I guess my question is, how does, does that small bit bring in more taxes than these other, these are all residential places, so do they bring in less taxes than these commercial places?
Chris, is section G the two city properties?
Yes.
It says commercial.
Yes, those are the properties owned by the city. And if you look where it says mixed use and hotel and all that, that's all effectively commercial, just so you know. But section G, I'm told, is the property owned by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions, concerns? Okay. So, my understanding is, you want to be on the agenda for the August 4 meeting? Does anybody have an issue with that? And I don't know how the board feels about maybe having a work session between now and then, so we can all get together and discuss this. How does everybody feel about that?
I'm good.
That's a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. I don't know that we need to pick a date right now, but maybe we could communicate, correspond the next couple of days and find a date that works for all of us to get together and at least start going through this. And then I would hope that we could get the traffic study as early as you can, but at least by the 4th, correct? And Mr. Berusch, I would ask that you give Mr. Berusch everything that he needs in order for him to do his thing with enough time that we have it, so we can digest it for that as well.
So the last remaining documents that are due to Mr. Berusch are the sources and uses, which Ryan Summers, who's doing the TIF and the financial modeling for us, has told him that we'll have to him prior to him leaving on vacation next week, so whether he, not sure where he's going, but maybe if it's sitting on a beach, he would like to review it for us. And we had a conference call with the traffic engineer, he has promised us that report on the 29th of this month. And so we will make sure that we have that as well. We did want to answer some of the public comments, if that works for you guys, since we're here and they're asking.
Let's do it, we're here, let's.
Paul, do you want to start with, you start?
I'm Paul Deutsch with Bielaski Cleveland Architects, and I just wanted to try to respond to a couple of the questions, in particular relative to the height and some of the things that the mayor brought up. The 85-foot building height that's in the PUD language right now would not result in an eight-story building. The intent for that is to deal with the hotel, which would be a six-story building at that height, based on the, you know, common floor-to-floor heights for a hotel, and that is measured to the midpoint of the gabled roof. So that's not the height to the top floor. So if, in a hotel building, you know, the first floor might be a 16-foot floor-to-floor height, because they have, you know, like a breakfast room, the lobby, the breakfast area, the lobby, there might be a fitness room or other uses, so typically, that floor is higher. And then, depending, in each hotel flag, they build their buildings a little differently, but it's at least, you know, a 10-foot 8 floor-to-floor height, you know, in order to get, what typically hotels now are all looking for, 9-foot ceilings. So that's really what the intent of that was, or is, I should say. And then, with respect to the street width and the one-way streets, in a 14-foot street width is very typical for a one-way street, and the 8-foot parking is additive to that, it wasn't intended, and maybe we just need to look at the language and make sure that that's clear, in case it isn't. But that's, you know, 14-foot traffic lane, and then next to it, an 8 feet for a parallel parking space adjacent to it. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about those couple of things. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
One of the residents, you heard talk here, was concerned about height, and he's at the southern extent of your property?
Right, so, oh, I'm sorry.
What, I understand his concern. What is likely to be the maximum height of a building at the southern extent of the property? I guess that would be on the Omni Development section.
Right, so the plan that we've been working with them has the buildings that are nearest to the property and are single-story buildings, so they would be, you know, limited to the 35-foot height, which is a standard height limitation for a normal residential building, whether that's a house or condos or whatever it is. And then further to the north on the site, the height that we're asking for there is for four stories, but that would be well away from the property line, well, you know, well beyond that 50-foot setback. And part of the process, even beyond this, that we would continue to work with Planning Commission, is making sure that when we're, you know, we're designing this and we're, and in their case Omni, we're, you know, going to be collaborating with them as well, making sure that we're doing the right thing in that regard, or we're not putting, we're not even allowing it to happen anyway, you know, a four-story building right on that south property line, we would not ever intend to do that.
Okay, so to speak to the resident with the biggest concern, it's totally reasonable to expect LSB to agree to, say, planting trees that'll reach 30 feet in height at extreme south of the property? I don't think that's an unreasonable.
I don't see why not, I mean, I would defer to Jeff, of course, but no, that seems like a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
I think that was one of the residents' suggestions, it seemed totally reasonable to me.
Yeah.
We're going to accomplish sight, we're going to accomplish sound, some sound insulation.
Yeah, I mean, it would accomplish some sound issues, but more importantly, I think, is the light trespass, that's something that we're, you know, very concerned about.
Okay.
And we also, and if you'll, I think in the last meeting that we had here, the presentation, we talked about that a little bit, in that the, like, for instance, the surface parking in that elderly housing development was screened from the south property lines by, because the buildings were the buffer, there was really nowhere on the site where you would be, you know, in those houses to the south and looking at, you know, site light poles, if you.
I see. Okay, great, great, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Paul?
Any other questions?
Yeah, through the chair, if you could refresh my memory with the piece A, with the mixed use, how many floors, again, were you anticipating?
And what we're, well, what we're anticipating, what we're trying to be entitled to do, we're still, you know, studying that, but it would be five-story buildings, so four stories of residential over retail. And again, that would be buildings that are, you know, typically a retail floor-to-floor height these days is about 20, 18 to 20 feet, and then again, the residential floor-to-flowers would be 10-foot 8.
Now, again, refresh my memory, was the, the thought that those would be apartments?
Yes. And only those, and again, just to be clear, that's the only place on the site that that's being proposed, the rest of the housing would be for-sale housing.
And that unit will be a 60-foot, 60-foot overall, if I understood what you just said?
It would be, give or take, a couple of feet, yes. I mean, typically, like, the other similar buildings that we're building now, the ground floor is 18 to 20 feet, and then 10-8 is the, kind of the magic number for the floor-to-floor heights in the residential, in order to get 9-foot ceilings, which is pretty much what's demanded in the marketplace these days.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you. You're welcome. Mayor would like to speak again?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me the indulgence of having a secondary comment. And I thank the gentleman from the developer for his clarification of the height restriction. As Mr. Norman pointed out, if it's not in writing, it's not binding, so I just want to simply suggest to the Planning Commission that if the 85-foot height is to apply only to the hotel, that that should be incorporated in the PUD for purposes of making sure that everyone understands exactly what it applies to and what it does not. If it's only the hotel, then let's say that in the PUD. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will take comments from the Planning Commission members individually, just want to call the names individually. Yeah, and, second, Terry, you want to finish up before we get into, because we're about to wrap up, so if you want to come up?
Sure.
In regards to taxes, the difference of what the property generates now, and I know because I just cut our six-month check, is $41,000 in taxes on the property currently.
Is that the real estate tax?
Right, so, fully developed, the property appears to $2.8 million a year in tax revenue.
Is that a combination of the real estate income, everything, basically?
That's just real estate taxes.
Just real, okay.
That's not income or anything else.
You said 2.8%?
Yeah, 2.2,775,347. And this information was sent to Mr. Berusch today, so he'll be able to simplify that as well.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd really like to see that finding from Legal as soon as we can see it. If we could do that, please. That's it for me, thank you. The reference to the charter, the interpretation of the charter. Thank you.
Mr. Bright?
Just want to thank the involved parties for coming out and providing us with the documentation and the information tonight, and thank you to the residents for coming out and giving their input.
Mr. Logan?
Just briefly, this looks identical to what we saw a few weeks back, is this essentially the same development plan? Has there been any modifications over the past few weeks that aren't reflected, that we have not seen? Thank you.
Okay. As I said, you'll be on the agenda for the August 4 meeting, and I'll get together with my fellow Planning Commission members, and we'll schedule a work session maybe two weeks from now, I'm thinking, but we can discuss that. Can I have a motion for a German?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just would want to state that the past couple of months have been really exciting for the city of Seven Hills with what's happening with this project. I'm especially impressed with the work of Pam Hanover, with Squires, and Chris Tobin, both our legal counsel on this project. I've been sitting in a number of the meetings and on conference calls, and the way that they have handled this has been unbelievably professional and great for the city. They've worked very well with Alan Ritchie from one of the developers' teams, and the prospect of having both of these developers build in Seven Hills will be of a tremendous benefit to the city, and I am very excited about what this will mean to our future. And thank you to the Planning Commission members for your work, too.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Joe Jordan?
Motion.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. McCafferty? Hi. Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Joris? Mr. Ruffra?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.